So how can you even consider this 90% compliance rate that we heard earlier when enforcement is complaint-driven? And these are some of the things that I wanted to clear up because there's a lot of misinformation, and that's the reason why I've requested meetings with each of you so we can spend some time covering the misinformation on this issue. And I know Mayor Buckley that you are very familiar with restaurant operations, but I wanted to make sure that you too understood some of the misinformation. And let me also say that we understand and share the goal of reducing litter. However, there are many different types of litter, and it is not specific to any one industry. And this proposed mandate would significantly increase the cost of disposables for restaurants that are currently using PS foam in order to address the small percentage of foam containers that end up in the litter stream. A 2012 study of various litter surveys showed that PS foam food service products average only about 1.5% of total litter composition. Now, the ban supporters will also imply that paper and compostable alternatives will naturally biodegrade in the litter stream. Well, that too is misleading because polyethylene coated paper, for example, is not biodegradable. And compostable alternatives do not naturally biodegrade. Those items have to be sent to a commercial composting facility in order to fully break down as designed, and such infrastructure does not currently exist in the city of Annapolis or Anarundel County. And claims that compostable materials will break down better in landfills are also irrelevant because modern landfills are designed to retard degradation because of dangerous harmful gases and leachate. Alternative food service products are generally doubled to triple the cost of the polystyrene foam products that are currently used, and that is very difficult to absorb for narrow profit margin industries like ours and very tough to pass on to price-sensitive customers. I brought some examples here. This is a standard eight-inch polystyrene foam carryout container. It costs about nine cents each. This is a very inexpensive plant fiber, the gas it's called. It's about 19 cents each. So that's a little more than double the price. When it comes to bowls for soup, very inexpensive 12-ounce soup container, eight cents a piece, this alternative, it's a coated paper. It's about 20 cents each. That's about two and a half times the cost. So if you're an operation that does a lot of takeout and delivery, you're doing high volume, you're going through maybe 500 of these per week, that is going to be a significant cost increase to your business into the thousands. And that is why a lot of these businesses have not made the switch because they simply cannot afford the cost of these alternatives. And restaurants mostly use polystyrene foam because it's a very cost-effective way of keeping foods at proper serving temperature. There is no alternative that will keep soup or coffee as hot as polystyrene foam. And so it becomes a quality issue as well for the restaurants to make sure that these products are maintaining temperature so that the customer has a good food experience. We believe that these types of decisions about what type of product to use for your food packaging should be made by the business owners based on their specific needs and the price that they can afford. And we did hear reference to some pricing information that the city shared in their press release on this issue, and some of the information in this also is not applicable. It talks about a 12-ounce soup bowl. It quotes a unit price of five cents. And then it talks about a plastic gen pack replacement at also five cents, so there is no increase in cost. You would never use a plastic container for soup because of the heat transfer. It's not good at insulating. So again, this is not very practical in all applications. The same on a polystyrene foam carryout container. They've replaced a plastic container, which is very effective if you're doing things like salad or deli sandwich, but it's not good for holding hot food. So again, this information is very misleading, and I know this gets into the minutia of restaurant operations, but that's also why I requested to meet with all of you so that you would understand it's not that easy just to switch. If it were, these places would have done so already. I received some emails after we sent down an alert seeking feedback on this issue from a restaurant operator who said that he has several restaurants in Anarundel County, one in Annapolis, and he's eliminated it from all three of his restaurants except for the clamshell containers because he can't find a replacement that works as well at a price he can afford. If he were to do so, it would cost him an extra $20,000 a year. That cost is not negligible. I heard from another restaurant that said that they would like to switch, and they were going to this year, but they postponed the decision because it was simply too costly. I heard from another restaurant that has switched in their higher price point restaurants because the menu pricing is high enough that they can absorb the cost of this more expensive packaging, but they haven't done so at their restaurant that has a lower price point. And so when you're talking about restaurants that have made the switch, it's generally your higher end that can afford that kind of cost increase. But your small mom-and-pops, your carryouts, your seafood places, your barbecue places, those are the ones that use these containers for to-go and delivery. Those are the ones that cannot afford it, and that is why we are here opposing this legislation. Now, we think it's great that some restaurants, businesses have been able to afford these alternatives, but there are many different types of restaurants, as I mentioned. One size certainly does not fit all, and those businesses that can afford to do so will continue to make the switch as they can afford it. However, a mandate like this will disproportionately burden those businesses that can least afford it. And I'll end by saying that the fact that you've heard tonight that restaurants are switching to alternatives voluntarily, I think we even heard 95% of the restaurants in the city have already made the switch. I think it shows that restaurants are doing this as they are able to afford to do so, which further demonstrates that a ban, this type of mandate, is completely unnecessary. The market will take care of itself. It is for these reasons that we oppose this legislation. We urge the council to reject it, and I'll be happy to come and talk with you at length about this issue so that you fully understand the kind of decision you're being asked to make and that you're not basing such an important policy decision on misinformation. Thank you very much.
Alderman Savage? I just thought of that.
Did you happen to know how many of your members in Annapolis have made the switch?
No, we have not surveyed those who have made the switch to see how that's relative to those who have not. We simply asked our members to contact us if they had concerns about the issue, and so I was presenting feedback to you from those who had concerns, hadn't made the switch because they were concerned about the affordability of it.
Have you heard any feedback from those who have made the switch?
Yes, as I mentioned in my examples, there were some restaurant operators that had more than one restaurant. Some had a higher price point where they could absorb it. Others had a lower price point restaurant, so they had made the switch at their higher price point restaurant, but not the lower price point because they simply couldn't afford it and they weren't willing to pass that cost on to customers. Because anytime you raise a menu price in our industry, you kind of reduce foot traffic, and so there's a delicate balance that these business owners try to walk when it comes to issues like cost increase and how much of that you pass on to your customer.
You mentioned the percent. When you talked about, can you explain the percent? He said this makes up in the waste stream. You've mentioned that in your testimony.
Well, yes, I mentioned that polystyrene foam food service products comprises about 1.5% of total litter. And we have experts here who can talk a little more about the environmental side of litter and recycling, but that is based on a 2012 document that did a survey of various litter studies across the country, and that was the average they came back with from that study. And we'll be happy to provide a copy of that study to your sir.
Was that the Anacostia study you mentioned?
No, it was not. No, it was not. I know the Anacostia study is a little bit higher. I think that was somewhere between 2 to 4.5%, if I remember correctly. That study did come up during discussions in Montgomery County and Prince George's County as well, but we can provide a copy of both those studies if you'd like.
Did any of the studies look at the waste in the water column and in the riparian buffers?
I can't speak to that. I'm not sure whether they did or don't.
Okay, so it might just be roadside litter they're looking at or they're looking at landfill?
This was total litter.
Well, if you can give me any of that additional information.
Yeah, we'll be happy to give you a copy of that report.
And do you know any of your restaurants locally? I believe a couple of local residents utilize industrial composting, veteran compost. We also have another small composting firm locally that do accept compostable containers, but as you know, we're not proposing to require that at this moment.
You're absolutely right, sir. I know there are a few restaurants around town that use veteran composting. They will pick up compostables, which includes food service scraps and that type of thing. The challenge, though, is when it comes to takeout, a lot of those compostable materials end up at home, and so while the restaurant might have to pick up at their business location, that does nothing to get those compostables into some sort of facility so that they can be composted. So if you were to pass a ban and some of those alternatives were compostable without any infrastructure in the city of Annapolis or Anarundel County, a lot of those more expensive compostable alternatives would likely end up in the landfill because they would be collected in the regular waste stream because they're not recyclable. So you can't put them into the recycle bin. You would have to put them into the trash bin without any infrastructure to collect those compostables with curbside collection. That's a little bit different than what you asked about picking up of composting material at the restaurant business site.
And you had some other people that wanted to speak on the?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yep, sorry. Just state your name for the record. Okay.
Did he have another question? Sorry.
Yeah, why not just charge a small fee for takeout if restaurants can't afford to do this? I mean, 25 cents, 50 cents, something relatively small. I guess there's the extra cost of disposal if you use styrofoam regularly, you know, for in-house or out-of-house, but you know, it seems like you could relatively easily pass on the cost if somebody's getting a full meal at a restaurant.
And again, sir, very good question. It gets into the minutia of restaurant operations, and you know, if we could have a one-on-one meeting, I'd be happy to bring a restaurant operator to your office and we can talk about it a little more. But it is a little bit of a challenge to pass on a surcharge because a lot of customers will view that as a price increase, and there's a lot of competition within our industry. And we're also seeing a huge growth in delivery business, Grubhub and Uber Eats and those kinds of things, and they generally charge a surcharge of about 20 to 30%. So in Baltimore City, we found that a lot of the folks who were opposed to the polystyrene foam ban there were doing so because the cost of delivery was really eating into their profits, and so the additional cost of more expensive packaging on top of these delivery surcharges was of huge concern. And I don't know how many delivery services there are in Annapolis, but it is, oh, you just got, okay. So it is growing, and that is going to continue to be a concern, and that's why, again, business owners should be able to make the choices about what packaging best suits their needs at a price they can afford.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Josh Young with the American Chemistry Council, Mayor Buckley and aldermen and women. Say good evening, but it's getting close to good morning, so I'm going to try to be brief. I have submitted a written testimony. It's about five or six pages, includes many different studies. It includes fiscal impact notes. Not going to go through any of that. What I'd hope is that you would take the time to digest that, and we could have follow-up conversations. As Melvin mentioned, this bill was just introduced a week ago today. I think this is a very, very big issue. I've never, in dealing with any locality or state across the country, seen something move so quickly without there being individual meetings with aldermen and women to talk about the varying viewpoints, to go through the testimony. Again, I am not familiar with the Annapolis process, but I also saw that it was referred to two different committees. I would understand that they would be digesting the material, and we want to serve as a resource. Whatever eventually happens here, we have a lot of expertise with recycling. We have a lot of expertise with programs that have worked around the country, but we do not support bans. And I'll give one example of something that we say often, but it's very true. San Francisco was the first kind of big locality to ban this. Their litter increased. It was just a different kind of litter. So I just want folks to be cognizant of that, and the other thing that was mentioned at the forefront, while this does not mention compostables or biodegradable, that's essentially what you're going to turn to. And there is a huge misnomer that this somehow is going to be recycled or that you can just take this biodegradable material or compostable and just put it on the ground or put it in the Chesapeake Bay, and somehow that's not going to harm fish. It will end up in the landfill right next to the polystyrene if you do not have the infrastructure to deal with those alternatives. So while you did not mention the type of alternatives, I think that's something to ask ourselves. What are the alternatives? Do we all know? And how are they going to be dealt with? Can they be recycled? Is there infrastructure here to do so? A lot of times I think we say, let's ban something, but what is the real environmental impact of that? Okay, we've talked about the costs, and I'm not going to get into that, but I really think we need to take a deep look at what is the ultimate goal? Is it really to improve the environment? If it is, we would like to be a part of the solution. We would like to work with you. We have worked across the country on this issue. We have a lot of expertise. We have worked with NGO communities on this issue. So I offer that as an olive branch, and I hope that this is the beginning of the dialogue rather than the end, and so I guess kind of say that as a precursor. The one thing I'm going to touch upon, because everyone else is kind of talking about different things, is the safety of this product. A lot of times people confuse styrene with polystyrene. Styrene is a liquid. Polystyrene is a solid plastic. The FDA has been regulating polystyrene for 50 years. There is no impact to human health in terms of polystyrene. We can show you study after study after study, U.S. National Toxicology Program, U.S. National Institute of Environmental Health and Sciences, Chief Medical Officer in the American Cancer Society, Harvard Center for Risk Analysis, over and over and over again, all of this is in the testimony. They have not ever declared this as a threat to public health. So I just want to keep that in mind. A lot of times folks talk about this issue. Microplastics, marine debris, major issues of our time, not just in the United States, all over the world, particularly in developing countries, China, India, the Philippines, Brazil. It is a major problem. It is a huge concern and is a deep concern to the American Chemistry Council. But the bans aren't resolving that, and so there needs to be a much more comprehensive solution to that, and we want to partner with you on that. So I kind of say that as a precursor and kind of an overview because I hope today as a starting point for this discussion, as Melvin said, we would like to meet individually with all of you or collectively to have this dialogue, but at this time, we would ask that you slow this process down a little bit and not jump right into a ban, and we can have this dialogue and see what is the best solution for Annapolis.
Alderman Savage?
Can you explain how the litter studies were done? You mentioned San Francisco, but what other data? Or can you share any data you have about increased litter?
It's all in our testimony, all the links, all the detailed report. I think it'd be a lot, lot better use of all of our time to kind of go through that and then do a follow-up. I mean, to get into a real deep dive of a scientific study in a five-minute timeframe is rather difficult.
Yeah, I still didn't see any mention about the amount of litter in the marine environment in the water column or the riparian area.
We will be happy to provide it.
Anybody else? Thank you so much for your testimony, and thanks for reaching out to the councilors. You all booked appointments, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman and I are going to testify as well. My name is Lorenzo Bellamy. I'm with Bellamy Gen Group here in Annapolis. We represent DART Container, one of the companies that manufactures polystyrene, the subject of this legislation, and we are urging an unfavorable. I think, you know, Josh and Melvin have already testified about, you know, slowing this process down, giving us a chance to meet with you, to talk to you about some of the solutions that we think would be much better than an outright ban. One of the solutions, and we're talking to your colleagues at the county council level, is to look at recycling as opposed to an outright ban. I believe one of the proponents of the bill, maybe several, but at least one I heard, say that polystyrene is not recyclable, and I would say that it is recyclable, it's just not being recycled. And there's a little difference there. I mean, if you have a MRF or a waste hauler or recycling facility that is willing to take the polystyrene foam and recycle it, then yes, it can be recycled, and there is a market for it. There's a product, a machine called a densifier. I'm not a scientist, so I'm not going to go into all of that, but I'm sure there are a few folks who are scientists here and have that background and know that a densifier, what it essentially does, it densifies, it takes the air out of the foam, creates a block of the foam. The foam is then shipped to a recycling facility. It's cut into small pellets, and those pellets are shipped to a manufacturer that re-manufactures those pellets into products that go back into a commercial stream. And they come back in the form of plastic crown molding, maybe even used in this building, that comes back as picture frames that you buy from Target or Walmart, Kmart, et cetera. So there are commercial, viable commercial uses for recycled polystyrene. And so we are urging, you know, as Melvin and others have said, to slow this process down, allow us to have a chance to, you know, there's a talk about engaging with stakeholders. Well, we're your stakeholders, and we'd like to engage with you before there's an outright ban, and to look at one of the solutions to be recycling. I think the city of Annapolis, you know, I know there's been a ban in Baltimore City and Tacoma and some other jurisdictions, but this city, I think, is in a unique position, Mr. Mayor. You know, you've got 40,000 some residents, you have St. John's College here, U.S. Naval Academy, the General Assembly. This is a well and a prime city, I think, for recycling. You have the restaurants that are basically located in three principal areas, you know, Eastport, West Street, and Main Street. I think having a curbside recycling program, I think, would benefit the city. There's actually financial benefits to it as well. DART and others are willing to work and engage with stakeholders, you as members, as aldermen and mayor, to come up with solutions and systems for recycling and willing to engage in a public-private partnership with you if you're willing to have an engagement and talk to us about this as opposed to an outright ban. So for those reasons, I know that Josh said he's offering an olive branch and a hand, and we as well at DART would like to do the same before you reach your final conclusions. Thank you.
Would you like to speak to?
Yes, please.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Alderman Savage?
I was wondering, is there any place, where can Anapolitans take EPS to recycle it?
So number one, DART has seven, oh, my name is Kaylee Lockbert-Toll. I'm the president of the Maryland Retailers Association. We could throw a rock at my office. I'm right over here on Conduit Street, 171 Conduit Street. So DART actually has seven drop-off facilities throughout the state, and then there's also a group called EPS that has over 110 drop-off locations where they partner with businesses where citizens can just go ahead and drop off the materials. But we certainly are advocating, I think, for much more than that.
Do any of the facilities in the county accept EPS food?
Currently, currently, no.
The drop-off centers, the seven that we're talking about, do accept the food service products. There was a discussion that we only accept the blocks, but no, we accept all polystyrene.
I'm looking at a picture from your Crofton facility that says no food EPS is accepted.
We ran into that situation as well in Baltimore City. Someone, we don't know, was not DART, that put a sign up that said, we only accept block foam, we're not accepting, you know, dirty foam, and that is not our policy. And so I don't know, I can't really comment on that. That is not, that's not DART's policy.
So they went to other facilities in the state and did the same thing?
Excuse me?
They went to other facilities in the state and did the same thing? Put up the sign?
It's not just, excuse me, it's not just the DART drop-off locations that we're talking about too. So EPS partners with various Dunkin' Donuts and all types of businesses all over the place. There's actually a map of all the drop-off locations throughout the state that I can get you.
Is there a restriction on the type of, so why don't they accept the food grade at some of these facilities? But you're saying at the county, at the Crofton facility, they do accept that?
They should be accepting it. The fact that they're not, I can't explain why, but that is not the DART's policy. So they, like I said, we accept all kinds of polystyrene, whether it's the block foam or whether it's the, you know, the cups and the clamshells, clean or dirty, we'll accept those.
Do any jurisdictions in Maryland offer curbside recycling for styrofoam?
Not currently.
Why is that?
That's a good question. I don't know if it's a matter of will or if it's a matter of education or if it's a matter of funding. And like I said, we are at DART willing to engage and facilitate that process through the purchase of a densifier or as you engage with your recycling, your haulers, if there's a way, like in Baltimore City, we were encouraging them, they issued an RFP, to include language in the RFP that say, hey, you should be taking curbside and polystyrene and separating it. So that's something that's a little bit, you know, it's at administrative level if you're renewing your contracts, but you can leverage that with your hauler.
Do you manufacture EPS at all in county or state?
We have, we have one manufacturing facility in Federalsburg, and we have three distribution centers that receive manufactured polystyrene and distribute to restaurants and other consumers in the state.
Okay. I'm looking at conflicting testimony that your federal plant website says that it doesn't manufacture EPS.
That's correct. I didn't say they did. I said that they do manufacture, so they don't manufacture the polystyrene, expanded polystyrene for sale in the state of Maryland. That is correct. Our distribution centers in Harvard de Grace and Hampstead do receive manufactured polystyrene and distribute it to, throughout the state.
Okay.
So that is correct, and I think the proponents mentioned that, and they are correct.
All right. Thank you.
So again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the city council. My name is again Kaylee Lockbert-Toll. I'm the president of the Maryland Retailers Association. I want to mention too, I am a resident of West Annapolis. Alderman Peon knows the strife I've gone through as I'd love for our neighborhood around Annapolis State to be included in the city limits, but we're not. So there's that, however, I am here constantly and wanted to just add that for all of you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this issue. I also would like to speak to the myths and the facts surrounding the conversations that have occurred here today. And I have to say as well that we too agree with protecting Marylanders from potentially harmful products, but there simply are not facts to support the arguments that polystyrene is harmful. If you conduct a thorough investigation of the literature or even Google the topic, there is not one piece of academically vetted research that supports these claims. Literally, the websites this information is coming from, and I encourage you to Google right now, drfeelinggood.com or well.com. These are not academic websites. There are business owners and nonprofits that you should all be taking into consideration as well, such as Meals on Wheels and many owners in Annapolis, business owners in Annapolis who can show you that the similar products we've talked about today are just flat-out, not cost-neutral to businesses. Additionally, the manufacturer of the product, DART, that is here today, has repeatedly shown and can show all of you as they don't just manufacture APS products, they manufacture other plastics as well. They can show you those price-cost differentials too. And it's important to point out that because many of these alternatives are not biodegradable and are not recyclable, they will go to landfill or incinerators. This in turn increases the cost for taxpayers, counties, and our state. And the reason that that happens is because those alternative products are heavier, and so tipping fees go up when we send those products to landfill. Polystyrene can be recycled, and that's really kind of where I think all of us are trying to end on this note with all of you because it comes from a very genuine place. At no charge to the state, DART, and we've talked about this in seven counties, and then EPS across the state have these drop-off locations. Is this the ideal solution to this issue? No, absolutely not. But I think all of you are aware as well that Councilman Trombauer has also introduced legislation that will be heard on June 4th. So for the city to go ahead and take action when perhaps the county will go ahead and move forward with some type of densifier or recycling program seems to be jumping the gun a bit, and that's something I wanted to mention because we're having these conversations with the county as well at the same time. And this is potentially a new revenue stream, not only for the county but for the city as well. Polystyrene, when it's densified, right now in the marketplace is getting the highest amount of money for recyclable goods out of all the plastics that are out there. So that's something to keep in mind. And because I am under the impression and speaking with numerous people in and around the council that there seems to be this want to move forward, I would respectfully ask all of you to think about the impact on brick and mortar stores. This bill before you, like all of the other bills that we've seen, says nothing about online sales and the ability for a consumer, when they come into one of my retail stores to purchase this product and they can't buy it, for them to to purchase this product and they can't buy it, for them to just turn around and go online or buy it from Amazon and spend their money there. And what's the problem there? That we're not supporting those jobs right here in Annapolis. We're not supporting the property taxes and the neighborhood stabilization that my brick-and-mortar retail stores provide here. It drives business away from our members and I can't hammer that home enough to all of you. And I do want to mention that in Baltimore City, that's a huge difference between the legislation that passed there and what you've introduced here. Sale of the product is still allowed in Baltimore City and this bill would ban the sale of the product. And finally, although the bill exempts meat and seafood products in the grocery stores that we have here, it is important to point out that vegetables such as mushrooms or mixed meat vegetable products such as kebabs are not explicitly exempt from the legislation. And, you know, that's something that we certainly would want you all to consider as well. I want to stop there, encourage a dialogue and a conversation with all of you and work with us to create expanded polystyrene recycling in the state. We can do it. It would be incredible for Annapolis and Anarondo County to be leaders on this issue. It has been done in other jurisdictions all across the country. We have models that we know exist and it's possible. There are grant programs and ways that all of us are willing to help. Banning products just does not get to the underlying issue we're sitting here talking about, which is litter. How you accomplish a solution there is through education and recycling. Respectfully, we are in opposition to this legislation and I work forward, I look forward to meeting with all of you.
Alderman Savage?
Well, the mushrooms, I believe most mushrooms are probably packaged offsite in the county, outside of the county and so probably would not, they would not be, fall under this ban. Question about the recycling again, and so you said there are no jurisdictions in Maryland that currently recycle. Have you spoken to any of those jurisdictions about doing that?
Yes. So the conversations that we've had are that when you renew your, and send out your RFP and you're working on your MOU with your waste management contractors, maybe of one, maybe of twenty, I know Anarondo has sixteen, I think was the number that was given to us, there is an opportunity there to either put out a new RFP for an entity that will sort that product out or just flat out put in that contract that you want polystyrene number six plastics sorted out and then you densify it and then you turn around and sell it in the marketplace.
Sorted out where? On the curbside or at the?
Right, in single-stream recycling. It could come in in single-stream recycling and just as we sort all of those items out right now, that's what, at the centers, you would do the same thing with polystyrene.
Are there any jurisdictions that have, I think most jurisdictions in Maryland are single-stream.
Right. So in Maryland, that's not going on, but that model does exist in other cities and jurisdictions all over the country.
So the larger jurisdictions just haven't, why haven't they pursued the recycling?
They chose the ban route instead of thinking about recycling options for whatever reason.
And what, you mentioned purchasing, what containers are you worried about people purchasing online?
Anything and everything. That's polystyrene that you would not now, if this legislation goes through and my retail stores cannot sell this product and somebody wants this product for whatever reason, someone will just get online and find it online and buy it. And this doesn't address that.
What do they use? What products do they use? Like what would they use EPS for?
A birthday party? Yeah, I mean, all these products. So, yeah, exactly. Soup containers, I mean, if you're throwing an event, you want to keep costs down. I mean, we're talking about a huge price differential here, two to almost three times the cost difference for a product, by the way, that you can't recycle anyway. So.
What's the difference between like a package of styrofoam plates and a package of paper plates?
The packaging?
Yeah, well, I'm saying if you go to a grocery store and you can't buy the, is there a cost differential between getting a pack of party plates made of styrofoam and plates and not paper?
Absolutely.
How much is that?
I can go ahead and survey grocery stores in Annapolis and I can come back to you with that, but off the top of my head, I know that it's a two to three times price difference.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. It's going to first reader, it'll go to committees and so we will have time for you to talk and talk to all the councilors, so we definitely want to communicate with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Rich, do you need a motion to?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention to this body that under the parliamentary procedures that govern the council's meetings, no public hearings are supposed to?
We're still on the one subject, so.
Okay, okay.
So after this, we're going to take a vote to extend, but they're still on this one subject. Does anyone else like to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to be ahead of the, ahead of the curve.
I'm Louise Taylor. My address is 28 Williams Drive and I am a member of the Sierra Club. I'm not speaking for the Sierra Club tonight, I'm just speaking on my own behalf. First of all, I think that the alternative products should be biodegradable or compostable and then you don't have to worry about them being in the landfills or if they are in landfills, they're going to biodegrade. So that's number one. Number two, nothing is going to happen to Dart if this ban is passed. It's one company and I already heard them testify at the state level that they're going to survive just fine. Number three, they've mentioned that there's no study that says there's harm to humans from the EPS, but it absorbs toxins. So ultimately, there is a lot of harm to humans because all the toxins that are absorbed are going into the crabs and fish and we love that, you know, those items in Annapolis. But finally, just do it for the animals, even if it weren't harmful to human health, which I don't agree with because of what I just said. Do it for the animals. It's destroying them and it's destroying, again, if you want to put it in monetary terms, our industry. So, thanks.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Molly Cook. I'm a registered nurse and I'm earning a master's in nursing and public health at Hopkins. Right now, I live in Baltimore City. First, I wanted to just mention there were several people that did have to leave because we ran so late. Elvia Thompson, the executive director of Annapolis Green, Kate Baker from Annapolis Environmental Commission, John Turgeon from AEC and the Spa Creek Conservancy's executive director, Emmy Clements. And as I mentioned, it is a top priority for the Sierra Club. So we can debate fiscal notes all night, but the bottom line is there's a hundred and fifteen of these in eleven states. You can find those fiscal notes. You can see how it's worked out for them. It is not a zero cost difference, but it's fairly negligible and it's definitely worth it when you look at the public health concerns that we're talking about. Additionally, when you look at cohort buying or the increased demand and supply of the alternative products, we can expect to see the prices go down over time. I think a big criticism generally of policy and policymaking in general is that we're always looking at the short term. And so in the short term, yes, Dart might lose a certain amount of money or businesses are going to have to adjust their practices or their prices, like you were saying, but in the long term, we are filling our oceans with an eternal substance that never goes away. It won't go away after you die, it won't go away after I die, it's here forever in the ocean. Let's just let that sink in a little bit. I also wanted to say, I just, in my mind, I just keep thinking of like your children in front of a fire making s'mores and they're throwing the clamshell polystyrene on there. I just don't think you let them. We know this substance is toxic and we also know that we're incinerating it. And the incineration, we know about asthma and COPD also causes CBD. So that's the leading cause of death in our nation and a lot of those deaths, we can't quite attribute them to something in particular. It's very likely that these are having worse health outcomes for people than we can actually anticipate currently based on the research. It doesn't make sense to me to say that we should promote the recycling infrastructure of polystyrene, but then turn around and say that we can't recycle those other materials because of the infrastructure. That's silly. And actually, we should go with the material that we just know is safer and then continue to work on the infrastructure for recycling and not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I mean, if we know that one material is better than the other, let's move. Let's take the action that we know we need to take and then on the back end, we can kind of continue to work on improving and perfecting those options, like they were saying. Yeah, I think that's all I have to say. So thank you so much for your time. That's late night. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one, all right. I declare the public hearing on O-22-18 closed. We will now have to take a vote to continue business after 11:00 PM. Is there a motion to continue?
No.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
You've done this to me so many times. Come on.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say with conviction.
No.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second readers, beginning with Resolution R-17-18, Weather It Together Cultural Resources Hazard Mitigation Plan for the purpose of adopting the Weather It Together Cultural Resources Hazard Mitigation Plan for the city of Annapolis as an amendment to the natural hazard mitigation plan to document vulnerable cultural and historic resources in the city.
Is there a motion to adopt R-17-18 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Penile Charles?
Yes.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Mahenson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Perry?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Mr. City Attorney, next item on the agenda, please.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-18-18, Equal Protection Task Force for the purpose of establishing a temporary advisory task force commissioned to provide the mayor and city council with a public forum for studying and preparing reports about the issues of foreign-born residents of the city of Annapolis and matters generally relating to said task force.
Is there a motion to adopt R-18-18 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
No discussion.
No, sorry. Delirious. Oh, Alderman Arnett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. While I understand the intention of this, I still am troubled by it because it seems that it's an effort in search of a mission and I think that we are inundating ourselves with all of these different commissions. I kind of wonder what all of our liaison people are doing and aren't they really the ones that should be bringing these kinds of issues to us to discuss? A temporary commission to look for something to do is really not my idea of business we should get into, so I'll be voting no.
Alderman Penile Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all recall, about a year ago, this was accompanied by an ordinance. The intent was to have this work done within a year. However, our liaison, Hispanic liaison, was not with us after June the 30th. The elections came and went. Mr. Rodriguez and I finally got together and we want to continue this task force. Now that we do have Ms. Adriana Lee on staff, they have started to do the work already. We've had a couple of meetings concerning this task force. We've had a change in administration. We've had some changes within the mayor's office. So through all of that, we were unable to do what we needed to do within the timeframe. I've spoken to Mr. Alderman Rodriguez on several occasions. Like I said, we've had a couple of meetings. The work is being started and in fact, tomorrow, Wednesday of this week, at the Pitt Moy Recreation Center, there will be a One Annapolis launch. There will be opportunities for persons and residents. You with me, Alderman Arnett?
No, no.
Oh, well, I guess. What seems to be the problem?
You've just told me that you've already started this work, so why do you need this? I mean, I.
It's still in existence. The old resolution, well, the resolution that we passed last year has not expired. So that's why we're doing the work now. It's still in existence. It has not expired. Now, if it had expired, that's a different story, but it has not expired. So it's still in existence. We just want to extend it for another year. Is there a problem with that?
It's not temporary if you're going to continue to extend it.
I think I just gave a few reasons why it did not move. We didn't have the Hispanic liaison for a year and that was the person who was going to be heading it. I apologize for wasting your time. Thank you.
Alderman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has the task force been appointed? I mean, is it in place?
Well, that's a question for Mr. Rodriguez, for Alderman Rodriguez.
So, well, first of all, thank you, Alderman Penile Charles, for extending this, for first coming up with it and then extending it for a year. As you well know, the Hispanic liaison position has been vacant for the last year, just recently filled.
Wait a second, I've got the floor. I just asked a simple question. Can somebody answer it? Has it been appointed?
That's who was answering it?
I asked him to answer.
No, there hasn't been official appointments to the task force.
Okay, you go to the floor, Fred.
Mr. Mayor, do you promise that you will expeditiously appoint the task force? I assume that it's the mayor, I think, appoints. I co-sponsored this legislation last year, but it doesn't look like anything has happened. I mean, what, what makes anybody think anything's going to happen this time? I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just asking, I think, a good question that's based in good faith.
I mean, I think you can see the actions of our office. We've moved forward in these things. There is an event on Wednesday, it's the fastest growing demographic in the city. We have to address it and so I promise you that we will move fast on this.
All right. I, look, it was, this legislation was a compromise. There was something a lot stronger initially proposed and by the time it went through committees, frankly, got watered down and this was something that I think could be of some benefit, at least I thought that last year. I'd be acting quite inconsistently if I didn't support it this year since I, not only did I vote for it, but I co-sponsored it last year. So, I mean, I'll vote for it. I don't see how there's any harm or any cost involved, but it's disappointing to say the least.
Yeah, no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Alderman Penn, for supporting it and for being a co-sponsor last year and I can't really speak to what happened last year with this because I wasn't on the council, but I can tell you things are very differently from the support, obviously, from the mayor's office as well as the fact that we have a very professional Hispanic liaison this time who knows as great ideas of how to use this task force as a resource, an important resource, as the mayor said, when twenty percent of the population is foreign-born resident and the fastest growing demographic. So with that said, and as well as being on the council, I'm going to make it a priority to make sure that we fill the appointments with subject matter experts in the appropriate areas and people who actually do work and not just talk.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Savage?
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a great initiative and I think the timing's been working out well and we have our first Hispanic alderman and we have our first Hispanic liaison in the city. We have a mayor who campaigned, and many of us who campaigned on One Annapolis. So I think this is a great initiative. I think it'll dovetail well with the one that we passed on consent calendar for the African-American community. So I want to commend Alderman for following through with this.
Thank you, Alderman Savage. Appreciate it. Thank you, Alderman Savage, appreciate it.
So we have a second. Madam City Clerk? Please call the roll.
Did we second? Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Penel Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Hansen?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Alts, have it. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on first reader. Reader removed from consent counter, beginning with ordinance O-23-18, rezoning the city dock to the mixed-use MX zoning district for the purpose of implementing the recommendations of the city dock master plan by rezoning the city dock area to the mixed-use MX zoning district.
Is there a motion to adopt O-23-18 on first reader? I'll move. Okay, Alderman Rodriguez, we have a motion, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, you need a second. You need a second.
Oh, all right. Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion or not?
Looks like it fails for lack of a second. It fails for lack of a second.
Okay. So the motion fails for a lack of a second? Next one. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is ordinance O-24-18, fee refunds and waivers for the purpose of establishing a procedure whereby certain permit or license fees may be waived by resolution of the city council for a project constructed by or on behalf of the Board of Education of Anarundale County.
Is there a motion to adopt O-24-18 on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Arnett?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that, well, first of all, I can't find a fiscal impact. I'm not sure what we're waiving or how much. But one of the things we discussed at length in the Finance Committee is the incredible amount of fees that we're waiving here and there. I just don't think we can continue with this practice of waiving fees. I mean, it's a feel-good thing, and of course, my sister works in this building and tells me the horror stories every week, but I don't know what we're waiving. How much money are we talking about?
I defer to the city manager for that.
Thirty thousand, five hundred dollars.
How much?
Thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. Three, zero, five, zero, zero.
Alderman Hansen? Alderman Hansen, sorry.
I'll address that as well. The county is of the understanding that they would not be required to pay that fee in any event. The county funds, of course, are coming from taxpayer dollars already, so considering it a double tax. It's a double dip. You are taking it from taxpayer dollars, and then you are putting it back into the repository by funding it as a fee to the City of Annapolis. So it is their understanding and belief that they would not be required to pay the fund. I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need to discontinue a practice of waiving fees carte blanche. But I think that we need to stop doing that across the board, when it's things like the Nitro Circuits, when it is other things. I think that we don't throw the gauntlet down at Tyler Heights. Tyler Heights was built in 1962 when we desegregated our city schools. It was built to alleviate the overcrowding once we integrated the schools in Annapolis. Tyler Heights now is a school that is 75% Latino. Tyler Heights has traditionally been a place for people that was displaced. It was built because it was full of students that were displaced when we integrated our schools. I think it sends a horrible message if what we say is, after we have waived fees for every other leisure activity, that now for the children of Tyler Heights, we are unwilling to waive any fees, when their parents have already paid taxes for the school to be funded to be built. I think it is not the time to say that we are, as a city, unwilling to accommodate our students. We, the only way that we can assist in the school being built is to waive the fees. We can't fund the project, we don't have the millions of dollars to do that. We can't build the school, we don't have the authority to do that. This is the only skin in the game that we can give to our students at Tyler Heights, and I think that it's the least that we can do is to move the process forward and waive the fees. The school board has explicitly asked us to do that, Dr. Arlato himself, I know that myself, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Finlayson, we have made advocacy efforts to move this project forward. Tyler Heights was number one on the MGT study for the county to be revitalized, rebuilt. Tyler Heights has moved all the way down to number eight in favor of a new Crofton High and a host of other projects that had advocates that were advocating for it. It sends a horrible message if, as a city, we won't do the one thing that we can do to move this project forward, and I fear that if we don't, it could get moved even further down. When you see the children at Tyler Heights, you hear the horror stories of children who have all types of things going on, going out to the modulars and all types of inclement weather, the safety concerns about children only being separated by everyone by a chain-link fence. It is unacceptable, and I think that it sends a horrible message if we don't do the one thing we can do, Alderman Arnett.
Alderman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not aware that we waive permitting, hookup fees, that sort of thing, willy-nilly. We hardly ever do that. As a matter of fact, we refuse to do it for the, which place? Out on Willow Street, the Lighthouse Shelter. I'm not aware that we voted to waive these for, I'm hard-pressed to think of anybody else who'd ever waived it for. I, I don't, when is this project supposed to begin? What is being renovated? I mean, what I understand, the whole school can use renovation, and they are expanding it, and I think that is important. I guess I'd like to know, like Alderman Arnett, believe it or not, may not always seem like it, but I spend some time preparing for each and every meeting that we have, and I'm looking at this for the first time tonight. It's not like we haven't been busy, and I, you know, might have had time to study this thing when, in other parts of the meeting. I, I've certainly never heard of waiving the fee for another jurisdiction. I mean, if we don't waive the fee, does that mean it's not gonna, they're not gonna get started on it at the same time? I don't know what difference it makes. I'm like you, I don't know if they have to pay it anyway, but I guess I've got a lot of questions about this. It's, I want to see Tyler Heights renovated and expanded as much as anybody because I hear the same thing everybody else does. It's overcrowded, it's maybe not dangerous, but pretty close. There are way too many kids, you know, in the building, and it's not a great learning environment for many of the children that go there. That's all the things we don't want to have, but I'm not sure of the connection between waiving the permitting fees, $30,000, which we can ill afford to do in this budget. It's worth it for our children, for sure, but, I mean, are they all of a sudden gonna not expand Tyler Heights if this doesn't pass? I don't get it. And I don't think they have to pay it anyway, but.
Did you waive the fees on Green Street, on Annapolis Elementary? I wasn't here for that, so.
I don't think so. We didn't for Germantown in my ward or West Annapolis. I've never seen any, a piece of legislation like this, at least if I have, I don't recall it. Whether they had, whether we, you know, enforced, forced them to pay or not, I sure couldn't tell you that. I don't know if they paid a dime for those projects. I think the county can always step in and say, "To heck with you guys." I mean, I think the Board of Ed always pretty much, pretty much plays by our rules, but they do.